One.
We live. Okay.
Should have been a movie.
Call the meeting to order, Buster.
This meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen for the city of Cleveland is now in session. Anyone that has business before this board, please speak up and it will be heard.
Ted, will you open us with prayer?
He's muted.
You're muted, Ted. Danny, will you open us with prayer?
I will. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the privilege of taking care of the businesses of the city. You have a Father. We ask that everything that we say and do be in your will, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Okay.
Amen.
All right, I'm bringing in Jamie.
Jamie.
All right, Jamie, can you hear us?
Jamie? Jamie, you hear?
All right, maybe she'll chime in, but what they're wanting to do is have an event for Relay for Life, their annual event. And seeing y'all's Dropbox, they're wanting to have it on the walking trail on September nineteenth from seven to nine P M. And they would actually set up a tent in the parking lot across from the police station. And then they will line that section of the walking trail with the luminary bags. And then have some other tents to allow for curbside meals to be picked up by participants. And so if y'all don't have any issue with that, that'd be September nineteenth, seven through, seven P M to nine P M. And then.
It's a drive by.
Yes.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve.
Yeah, make a motion. Danny, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
All right.
Sorry, but you did a good job, Dominique. So we'll bring on David Bridges for the audit review.
Yes.
David, you hear us? David?
Looks like he's connected.
He's trying to, he's trying to connect.
I got you.
There he is. He should be.
David, you hear?
Unmute.
Can't hear you.
Bottom left hand corner.
There you go. David? Yeah, we hear you now. Uh.
Everybody looks really good tonight.
Yeah, you do too. So, so go right into it if you would.
Oh, you ready to get me?
We, we are. Yeah.
Okay. I need to ask a couple of questions first. What are y'all looking at?
Seventy. There's seventy-seven pages you sent us.
Okay. Did you get paper copy or did you get?
A PDF.
Electron PDFs. The reason I was asking, uh, this stuff prints out sometimes on PDFs in a way that it, it, it needs adjusting when we print it.
It's okay, David. I was able to read the whole thing.
If we come into double pages, for instance, you know, it may go the whole width of this report. But if you're looking at PDFs, are they looking at the same thing I'm looking at? Y'all be looking at the same thing I'm looking at. And by the way, I have Allison, who actually did y'all's audit with me tonight in case we need to ask her any questions. But I'm gonna breeze through this real quick for y'all. Uh, start on page sixteen of that audit report.
David, let me interrupt just a minute. We're trying to figure out what that's under. I think we're trying to follow.
It's under visitors.
Visitors, okay, thank you.
City of Cleveland, first one.
Everybody on page sixteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is a statement of net position. What it is, it's a full accrual basis balance sheet of the city, broken down between governmental activities and business type activities. Can everybody see that and understand what they're looking at? And then you have a total column on the far right, which blends the both, both of them together. All right. What you wind up with, you had total assets, both combined, of sixty-seven million, four seventy-nine. You had a total liabilities of thirty-six million, two seventy-six. And we'll skip that little, next little session. It is, section is treated as a liability, but your net bottom line is your net total position. This is your net worth. It's twenty-six million, five thirty-four, eight sixty-nine. Now that is on a full accrual basis. So the only adjustment you might make in your mind, if you're, if you look back from the bottom up where it says, uh, deferred inflows from other resources. This has a lot of the pension numbers in it. And then your total pension liability, if you go up a little higher under liabilities, was fourteen million, two thirty-one. So unless you think, we have to show it that way, but unless you think you're, you're gonna have to pay that fourteen million, which I doubt seriously you ever would, you could add that fourteen million to the twenty-six million at the bottom, and that's what your true equity is. All right, from there, let's go one more page over to page seventeen. This statement is referred to as your statement of activities. It's got your various revenues on it, and it's done the same way. It's a combination of the governmental and the business. Uh, your revenues come first under governmental activities. You've got the different categories of, uh, let's see. No, these expenses. Yeah, under expenses, you got your governmental expenses broken down by category, and then you've got your different revenue items, which is charges for services. That number was a million, two twenty-three. Your capital grants were seven hundred and thirty thousand. And it kind of leaves at that point. And your business type comes in underneath that, and then your other revenues that don't fall in the first section come in under general revenues at the bottom. Uh, you had thirteen, uh, twelve million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars worth of general revenues. And, uh, your overall change in position, which is really net income, was a negative twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars for the year. Your ending net position is this twenty-six million, five thirty-four. Now, this has a fair amount built in for pension expense. If you look back up to that first section, last one, the last item on the list, look across to the right to the total, your total pension expense was a million, six sixty-three, four ninety-one. Some of that, probably most of it, you actually paid, and some of it is accrued. That means you hadn't paid it yet, but it's payable, so it's included in these full accrual financial statements. Excuse me. Look over on page twenty-four now, and we'll look at the water and sewer and sanitation funds.
What page?
Twenty-four. Uh, twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Okay.
Is everybody there?
Yeah.
All right. If you look into the headings in the bold writing, you'll see water and sewer, and then sanitation, and you work down, and you, the first, this is your balance sheet. And then you've got a total combined water and sewer there. Under enterprise funds total, which brings it down to the bottom, your net position there is four million, six oh-two. And again, this is the balance sheet, and it lists your assets coming down. You got current assets and total assets. And then you get down to the bottom, you got current liabilities and non-current liabilities. This is where your, uh, your debt shows up in the, in the liabilities. Some of that'll be current notes payable, and some of it'll be long, uh, non-current notes payable. And we'll go over debt shortly. All right, uh, go to page twenty-five. And that's the end, this is the income statement on the proprietary fund. So it's, it's just a, if you look into the headings, you'll see the same way the balance sheet laid out. This is a layout between water and sewer and sanitation and total. And this is your, your operating income statement. And it, it lists your, uh, charges for services and your operating expenses. And see, like, if you look here, you're, we'll just look at water and sewer right quick. You had three million, three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, uh, with seven hundred and fifty-four dollars worth of operating expenses. And you had two million, eight-ten of operating income. So you move on down the page, of course, that's a deficit. You move on down the page, and we, we, we consider non-operating grants. I mean, non-operating revenues, which the first item you look at is grants. Uh, that's your weight, uh, two hundred and seventeen thousand, which that should, that was the wastewater treatment plant grant. That was a program you had this year. It was a grant and a loan. And we'll look at the loan later, but the grant part of it was two, two, two hundred and seventeen thousand, eight twelve. So that actually came out positive towards net income when you netted out the interest expense against and loss on disposal of equipment, those last two items at two oh-nine and the five thousand, two ninety-two figure. You net that with the non-operating revenues, which came out a positive nine hundred and eighty-six, uh, nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. Your total income or loss before transfers was a loss of five hundred, uh, I'm on water. But let's look at the total. The total is five hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine oh-nine. And then you had transfers in and transfers out, and I'm assuming they come from the city. Uh, capital, I mean, you had a deficit there of eighty-four thousand, which probably that eighty-four would be transferred subsequent to the cutoff on these statements. So your overall change in position on your, your proprietary funds was a negative six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-one. Come on down to the bottom, and your total equity in that, in your proprietary funds, which is water and sewer and sanitation, comes out to be four million, six oh-two. Now, on the right here, this is kind of a, a statement, a, a, a classification that sits out on its own, but what it actually is, is your medical insurance operation. Are there any questions? I'm moving fast.
That's quite okay.
Tell me, and I'll slow down.
Perfect.
All right, then we want to go to page thirty-seven. Thirty-seven, page thirty-seven is a schedule of your capital, of the activity in your capital assets for the year. Is everybody on thirty-seven?
Yes.
All right. Read, the way to read this statement is, the first column of numbers broken down by the types of asset and the types of depreciation is listed there. And that was actual ending balance from last year. Okay, the first column is, is pertinent to your current year. This shows that you increased your construction in progress a million, one sixty-nine, three forty-eight. You depreciate, you increased your depreciable assets, which is made up of infrastructure, buildings and improvements and equipment and fixtures of, of a million, one sixty-eight, three forty-eight. And then you, we'll talk about the whole bottom section in just a second. Moving on over to the left a little more, you come under, uh, deletions. You, you scrapped equipment of four, scrapped and or sold equipment of four hundred and five thousand, nine fifty-four. And then, uh, we got adjustments here. And what these adjustments are doing is we're moving out of construction in progress, a million, seven fifty-two, seven one six. And if you look here, uh, right under that, we added a million, seven fifty-two, seven one six in your infrastructure. Now, what was that? You remember? Majorly?
The others is where they transferred assets between the departments.
Transferred what?
Assets between departments. That's what the rest of the adjustments are.
I understand. Was it a particular project?
It was multiple projects.
Multiple projects that made up that, that amount that was treated, that then was constructed in progress. This indicates, this indicates that the projects were completed and are now moved over into your capital assets on which depreciation will begin being charged to them every year. And talk, speaking of depreciation, let's go to the bottom part of that little schedule. You see where it says less accumulated depreciation for infrastructure, building and equip, improvements, uh, furniture and equipment. Again, you start off there with last year's ending balances. During the year, your current year depreciation for the city, now this is just the governmental, the city part, was seven million, I'm sorry, one million, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. And then you move over, and, and here's the accumulated depreciation on the assets that you disposed of during the year. I'm not sure if you remember what the adjustments were.
Yeah, where they move assets between departments. They mostly from the city to business type.
Okay, so this is gonna show up on the business type. All right. Under these adjustments, that part that's not moving, the million, seven fifty-two was moving a completed project or several completed projects into active, active, uh, capital assets. Everything else that shows up in there deals with moving assets from the city to the enterprise funds. And you'll see the opposite of that show up. If it, if it actually increased assets here, it increased assets on the other side. So those really didn't go anywhere. They just moved into the different depreciation schedules. Go to page forty-six, and you look at the, uh, you'll see the, the schedule of depreciation. I'm not gonna go over this really because it follows the same pattern that the one we just looked at, except this relates solely to your enterprise funds. And what I'm trying to do here is to explain what you're looking at on these statements, and you can go back and study them at any time. And if you come up with any questions, just make a list of them and give them to Dominique, and we will answer your questions for you. But from there, let's go to page forty-six. Okay, now this, this is an important schedule on forty-six down at the bottom of the page. This is a schedule that lays out your debt activities for the year. And the top part of this one schedule, it relates to governmental activities, and the bottom part relates to business type activities. Reading this schedule the same way did before, you start with the ending balances from last year. Your additions for the year under governmental activities, this would be the city portion side of it, was two million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The reductions were a million, five hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight sixty-two. This adjustment deals with bond premium and how it affects the overall long-term debt over the term of the debt. And it was a, a decrease of, uh, ten mi, uh, ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. So your ending governmental debt turned out to be at, at September third, nineteen, ten million, one sixty-five, four twenty. Of that, a million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand will be due in the coming year. So overall, on the city, you went from, uh, long-term debt of nine thirty, nine million, three forty-two to a total outstanding balance of ten million, one sixty-five. And I'm sure, uh, that, uh, that two million was a, a public improvements bond. And, um, the three fifty-eight, you remember, that was probably a piece of equipment under capital leaks?
It's, um, there's police vehicles, animal shelter vehicle, um, and more.
Okay. Uh, let's look at the business type real quick. Uh, your beginning business type long-term debt, this is water and sewer and sanitation, was eleven million, six hundred and eighty thousand, three sixteen. And your ending was eleven million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, three twenty-one. You incurred two hundred, a new two hundred and fourteen thousand dollar debt of that two hundred and thirteen, eight fifty-one was the loan portion of that last treatment plant uh, transaction. This, this was related to the grant that I showed you earlier on the first statement. Retirement of debt, you retired seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-six. So your, uh, your long-term debt actually decreased there. Anybody wanna ask anything at this point? All right, now I want you to go to page sixty-six. I'm, uh, I'm sorry, page sixty-two. Now, this is a a, a, a listing of your outstanding debt that we just went through by the various debt obligations. It kind of breaks it down for you and what it was paid for. Your G O bonds, for instance, all those debts come under, uh, relate to the G O bonds. And it gives you a breakdown of, uh, what the beginning balance was, what you paid, what the ending balance was, how much you gonna have to pay in twenty-twenty, and how much you gonna have to pay after twenty-twenty. This is one you might wanna really spend some time studying on your own at a separate time. This, but this is your long-term debt, uh, for the city. Then you got other loans, your M D A from, uh, Paresham. That was that combined loan with the county, and it paid out during the current year. That's why you have no ending balance on that. And, uh, you got a bunch of M D E Q loans there. And that last loan shows up where? From, uh, on the water sewer?
That's it.
I bet it's on, uh?
Number six.
Number six. That last loan is included in part of that number six, M D E Q loan, which is your overall water and sewer debt since you started making the corrections that, that were required. Okay, now if you go to page sixty-six, we're getting close to the end now. This is a ten-year schedule on your revenue by source. You know, you've got your sources across the top and the amounts columned up underneath each one. So in the last ten years, you've collected three hundred, uh, thirty-eight, a million, two hundred and five dollars, four hundred and seventy-six in taxes. This gives you a, a way to look at it and see how much difference has occurred over the years in all of the revenue categories. Now, we'll go on and head off a question. You will notice that on this revenue schedule and also on the expense schedule that we'll look at next, you see a big difference between two thousand, look under charges for services. In fifteen, you had two million, seventy-two thousand, seven twenty-eight. And in sixteen, you had eight hundred and thirty-five thousand. And it's been in the eight hundred area, except it almost got to nine hundred and nineteen. And, and what caused that is that the water and sewer or above, the sanitation element was pulled out of governmental and put into enterprise funds, and that's where it should have been all along. We made that change back in sixteen. And that's what's created that difference between sixteen and all the years subsequent to that and fifteen prior year. Okay, and, uh, there's another big jump that needs to be looked at. Uh, in two hun, in two thousand and nineteen, all the way over to the right, just in, just before you get to total revenues, you got miscellaneous non-operating. And you've gone, in, in two thousand and eighteen, you had three hundred and fifty thousand. And two million, I mean, in two mi, uh, two thousand and nineteen, you had one million, nine forty-one. That's a huge increase. And what caused that was someone donated over a million and a half to the, uh, to the animal shelter. So that's why you've got that big jump there, and I'm sure you all know who that person is, but I'm not gonna name them individually, but I did reckon, wanted to recognize that one point five million dollar donation. That was outstanding. Uh, now go to page sixty-seven.
David, can I ask a question? This is Kirk Pavol. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Please do.
Um, I'm just talking about reductions in revenue on that page. Why, what do you think the drop in fines, fees, license permits, was that fines, it went down, you know, fifty-five, sixty thousand? Is that just because?
That's just, that just stands alone, or that's just difference in that year.
Okay.
That wouldn't have anything to do with sanitation more than likely.
No, no.
Maybe some late fees, maybe some late fees.
Okay.
I think, no, I think it's police fines.
You think what?
I think it's police fines.
Yeah. But that, that fluctuation is not something that we would draw attention to and focus on.
Thank you.
Uh, when it gets up to be a material difference and, and that could go up next year by twice what it, what it, uh, was in nineteen, you know, you never know, but I mean, they generally stay in the range, it looks like to me, five hundred is the lowest. And y'all might have already figured that because I've been seeing a lot of police out on the street lately with the radar going on. So we might be in the process of raising that. But that's, that's not, not a difference pretty.
Light and tickets and getting on the playhead is two different things.
Do what?
Nothing.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it was nothing.
Okay. Uh, page sixty-seven is your expenditure recap, as I said. And, and you'll see right there under health and sanitation, you, uh, you see a vast drop off on the expenditures going from a million, five eighty down to six hundred and fifty. That's because we moved the revenue on page sixty-six. And now we gotta move the expenses that go along with that revenue out of governmental and put them in proprietary. Okay, uh, on page sixty-eight's worth talking about. This is uh, a calculation of your remaining outstanding bond limitations that you could use. And now it lists all your, all your bonds. And as you're aware, there's a fifteen percent cap. Uh, you're allowed to take bond, I think your long-term bond debt can be fifteen percent of your, uh, value of your, value of your real property. And then, but if it contains to a utility or something similar now, the, uh,
Right, that's not including.
The, uh, water and sewer work that you're doing would probably fall under the twenty percent limitation. And, uh, that only leaves, that, that's pretty much what I had for you on the account, on the, uh, numbers part of it. The only thing I haven't talked about is your compliance. Now, I don't have a lot to say about the compliance, other than you had no findings at all this year, which is what you've been moving towards over. Which is what you've been moving towards over the last, since we've been working with you.
I think that's a good report then.
I know. That's all I'm gonna say about that.
Okay. Any questions of David?
Appreciate you.
Yeah. Thank you, David, we appreciate you, good work.
Some of this and, and come up with questions. You can relay, get them relayed to me through Dominique and the show.
That'd be perfect.
And we'll answer them for you.
Thank you so much.
All right, y'all have a good night.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
We're gonna move into public hearings, Danny Griffin?
Yes, sir, I'm ready, I'll start reading. Seven-ten Ruby Street, Dorothy A. Jackson, no progress, um, continuing down, uh, eleven-ten Lamar Street, uh, Cody Wayne Shoemaker, no progress. Five-ten Yale Street, Cleveland Recreation Association, no progress. Six-twenty Pearl Avenue, Elma Frazier, no progress. Six, eight, nineteen Shamrock, eight hundred Shamrock Drive, eight hundred St. Shamrock Drive, Jackson rental properties, uh, J and J apartment. Okay, uh, and then eight hundred A Shamrock Drive, J and J apartment, no progress. Uh, we have, uh, a, let's see, let me go back up to my next page, um, two-fourteen North Victoria, uh, Sultani Investments, some progress, uh, continuing down for no progress. We had one listed for Philip Laro on five-oh-nine South Bay Avenue. We were contacted by an attorney that's handling an estate. Uh, Mr. Lara has passed away, we've communicated with Kenneth Taylor. Uh, we would, uh, suggest that you defer adjudication on that property for forty days to give the family time to get with Kenneth and try to make some progress. Otherwise, the rest of these are in order for you to move.
Have a motion? Robert made a motion? Uh, Maurice, I think, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. What next, Danny?
I, engineering.
Okay, are we gonna do the, uh, twenty-twenty-one budget at this point, Dominique?
Yes, and before we do that, you guys need to, um, accept the audit report.
Okay, motion for that?
Make a motion to accept.
Gary made the motion, Paul second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Go ahead, Dominique.
I'm mute. Yeah.
Right, so the next thing, um, Mr. Campbell, you're not gonna be able to unmute your iPad if you guys are in the same room. Um, so the twenty-twenty-one budget, we didn't have any requests for a public comment. And so essentially, this is our public hearing. I will check over on YouTube to see if there are any comments on YouTube. All right. Don't see any questions about the budget. All right, so we can move to close this public hearing.
Gary made the motion? Paul second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, we'll go into engineering. Clinton?
All right, yes, sir, uh, so I got some payer requests. And so what I was gonna do, I was gonna hit the highlights and, and let y'all know everything. Uh, and at the end, y'all just, uh, a, uh, motion to approve it then, like it's the end. Uh, so just run through the, uh, highlights, uh, Highway eight and sixty-one lining project, got a payer request for that. They are gonna be pouring the last of the pole foundations all the way down to Family Dollar on the west side of sixty-one. Uh, and then they'll be switching over next week. Um, the next one, Fay Davis Stormwater Lift Station, they are, uh, should be pouring the top here coming in the next week or so. And, uh, they're progressing pretty, uh, they're progressing really good with that project as well. I also have a payer request for that. The, uh, fire station, uh, I have a payer request for that. The, um, water meters are going pretty well, we're about twenty-three hundred, uh, water meters replaced by the contractor. Uh, and so everything west of Pyramid has been, almost everything west of Pyramid has been replaced. Farmers Park Drainage Project, I have a, um, a payer request for that. That, uh, it was the giant, uh, the large, uh, inlet on the south side of Farmers Park, the southwest side of Farmers Park that was falling in. Uh, that's been replaced along, uh, as well as the other inlet on the west side of the intersection there. Um, M L K Sewer Basin's a C D B G project. Um, we are, it, project has been advertised and it is, um, we accept, uh, bid September twenty-fifth. Then the next thing is, um, Fay Davis. We, uh, we, we review the bids and everything, we were going to recommend to reject all bids and, uh, come up with a new plan for that project there.
What was that on?
Uh, the Fay Davis Storm Sewer Project. We bid out, uh, a couple of weeks ago.
That's, that's the line down the middle of Fay Davis, it'll go to the new pump station, correct?
Correct, yes, sir, that's the one that runs along the fence from Highway eight all the way down.
Why are you making the recommendation that we reject it?
Sir?
She good?
Uh, so why are you making the recommendation that we reject that?
Uh, the bids came, um, over our budget than what we had, uh, originally planned. And so we think that we can, uh, manipulate the plan and get the project cost down and still have the same effect, uh, the original project as the original plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, yes, sir.
I'm making a motion, I make a motion, we approve all the payer requests.
Gary made the motion?
Second?
A bunch of people second?
Ted.
I can't see some people, huh?
Ted.
Ted, okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Mayor, do we need to reject the bid by motion on, uh, Drainage Project?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
First made the motion to reject the bid, Danny second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Kirk. Okay.
Don't we need to accept the lowest and best beer for the Shelby Pump Station? It's on my list, don't know it's on there.
Yes.
Yes, sorry about that, we do have, um, we do have two quotes of those. Always gonna, um, sorry, uh, that was not on my list there, sorry. Um, but yes, we do want to, um, award to the lowest bidder on that project.
What's that on, Clinton?
Um, I can get back that to you, uh, or.
It's on the, it's on the Shelby sewer pump, we're replacing the sewer pumps in Shelby.
I got it, okay, never mind.
Paul, did you make that motion?
Yes.
Paul made the motion?
Second.
Gary second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, questions of Clinton? Thank you, Clinton.
All right, thank y'all.
All right, Danny, city attorney, report?
Esther, uh, your consent agenda is before you for approval?
Let me ask a question before we approve that. In the agenda, it says on the consent agenda that we have grass cutting, but it's nowhere on here.
I think that's my fault, I didn't take that off, that was a carryover from last month.
Okay, all right, never mind.
And then B, that should be August claims docket, instead of, it says July on there, that should be August.
We'll make the motion, we'll make the motion with the, uh, correction.
Okay, Robert made the motion?
Second. Second.
Oh, Gary second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Go ahead, Danny.
Yes, sir, next, you have, uh, an interlocal agreement for tax services with Bolivar County.
So I move.
Okay, Gary made the motion, Danny second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
The rest of that is either in my report or executive session.
Okay. All right, Kenny?
Uh, outside of my monthly report, I don't have anything to report. Uh, you guys have a copy of my report, uh, if anyone has any question for me.
I do have a question. Uh, planning commission comes before community development. I haven't heard a com- planning commission report in six months.
We've had, uh, two meetings this, this year, we have one scheduled for later this month. Uh, we do have something on the agenda, so we do meet.
Uh, well, I understand that, but I thought the board always approved what the planning commission did. And, and like I said, I hadn't seen one all year.
Only if there's something that has to come before, like beer or, uh, a change of use or something to that nature subdivision. Anything else that standard operation, it, it doesn't come back before the board.
That building down, that building down on, uh, Crawl Street never really coming for the board.
It went to a public hearing and, uh, Danny and I are working with that. We need to change the public hearing concept to bring it before you guys, that's what we were talking about. But the way it's written now, it di- it didn't have to come through.
Is that the, uh, personal care home?
Right, that's the one that's down on Crawl Street that, uh, uh, I've had a question asking about that and I want, uh, I assure them that I know this, uh, here coming for the board.
How many people reside in that facility, Mr. Taylor?
I think it's eight.
My understanding is that if it, more than two people is considered an institutional usage. And that is a major issue to be put into a residential area.
Institutionally, it would have to be more than, uh, fifteen to be considered institutional.
Okay, can you get me a copy of those? Uh, where, where is it found?
It's in the international building code.
No, I'm talking about, uh, uh, land use. I mean, w- we have an ordinance adopting all that, don't we?
Right, that's in the land use, but the use itself comes out of the building code. It's not specified in the, in the land use code.
The suggestion is this needs to be done in a way so more of this comes before the board.
It does.
Well, I mean, when you, when you look at the report, when you look at Ken's report, we had, uh, thirty-six, thirty-four thousand dollars short of ten million dollars of new construction this year. And we have not had one report come before this board. I'm just confused, I thought these reports used to come to the board.
Um, I'm still trying to figure out which, which report you're speaking of.
I, I thought the planning commission approvals came before our board because the planning commission, i- is it an authoritative commission? Or is it an advisory board?
An advisor.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
If it's an advisory board, then the Board of Alderman have to, has to approve what the planning commission adopts. And we got, we got, we got nine point nine million dollars worth of projects and we ain't seen one of them.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, may I make one question to the attorney? Regarding the, the, the item on Pearl Street, I know people that were there, just like it's in Ted's ward, but, um, if the attorney could look at our ordinance and see if, if that's covered. Because think of it this way, that's a neighborhood, that's a residential area. And you have an institutional type function that goes in there? Uh, and I'm very familiar with personal care homes, uh, I deal with them all the time. And Ted, I know you, you've had complaints.
Several complaints.
Cause creates, you want something next to your home, you have to look at it from your, the, your standpoint, our standpoint. Do we want that put into a neighborhood where people have their homesteads? And all of a sudden, they've got an institutional type usage there. So I would like to see, Danny, if you would investigate and report back in a memo as to if we have a limitation of two or more that invokes a, uh, institutional usage within a, what the city has adopted in terms of our zoning and our land use ordinance. Would you do that, please? Mayor, can I make this request?
Yes, please.
You, you meant, you mean down Cross, uh, curtain? Yes.
Pearl, uh, I, I don't have the address, Ted may have it, but.
On Pearl? It, it, it's on, it's right on Cross.
Cross.
Cross and Church, right?
Yeah, yes.
I thought it was at the intersection of Cross and Church, yeah.
It, it is.
Yeah, that's it.
That's right. That's it.
Ted, are you comfortable with that? I mean, I don't wanna interfere with your ward.
Yes, I, I, I appreciate that because, uh, some of the people just really want to know what we're actually going on over there. So I appreciate you, uh, making that recommendation.
Robert, you know, you dealt with him too.
Yeah. Kenny, Kenny, who owns that building?
Attorney Morris. Okay. That's not, that's not, that's not Kenny Thomas' building, huh?
No.
Okay. On Crawl Street, okay.
Any other question, Kenny?
Well, can we go back to Gary's question about the planning commission?
Sure.
Gary, um, in looking back, we did, we used to have information coming from the planning commission every, just about every month. Um, what, what, what are we gonna do going forward?
Well, I, I mean, I, I thought, I, I was like Paul, I thought the planning commission was an advisory board.
It is.
And, and that whatever they approved had to be ultimately approved by the board. I'll give you a perfect example. Uh, they disapproved the building of Hey Joe's. Our board reversed that decision.
I, I recall.
Correct.
So we, we would have never reversed it had it not come before our board.
We just have to be conscious, everything that goes on in Cleveland, we need to, to give the okay to, Kenny.
Way earlier.
Yeah. Uh, one final thing, Mayor, the attorney could get us a copy of the minutes from the planning and furnish that to the board, at least.
I thought that's what we used to get, Kirk.
Well, if we've had two meetings, I hadn't seen any minutes, but.
Well, first of all, I thought they met on a monthly basis.
Yeah.
Only when we have an, uh, only when we have an agenda. If we don't have an agenda, we don't have anything to meet about.
So for nine million dollars of construction, y'all didn't have to approve that?
Uh, most of the construction that you're looking at was the fire stations, uh, some of the other smaller things that renovations. Uh, we've not had anything large come through in a while.
Wait, uh, one thing, could we get the attorney to furnish us a copy of the minutes?
Yes, I've got it, I'm making a note.
Thank you.
It would be appropriate in every meeting going forward for you to have the minutes in the planning commission.
Yeah, I'd have it in the dot, in the, something folder.
Kenny, you attend every planning commission meeting, correct?
I do. I'm just, I, I actually, I have the, uh, I serve as the secretary, so I take the minutes. But I was unaware that the minutes need to come back before you guys. But now that I know, I will supply that to you.
Yeah, with that being stated, that's exactly where I was coming from, Mayor, and I won't prolong the time. Well, Kenny being the secretary, then he need to provide us with a copy of it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, further questions?
Are those minutes all already public, shouldn't they be, uh, public on our website?
They, they haven't been put out there, uh, as of yet. But, uh, we normally do put them out there.
Yeah, I think the law requires us to put them out there.
But Dominique and I have been working together trying to get it done. Uh, so I'm gonna supply them back to her and then make sure we get them out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Lisa?
Uh, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have anything to add to my report unless y'all have some questions.
You had a lot of additions.
Woo, we got a ton of stuff, it's just unbelievable.
I hope it's as impressive as it looks on the pictures.
It is, it's better, better than the pictures, it's just a, it's just a whole lot of stuff.
When you get time, please go by.
Yeah, please do, if you get a chance, wear your mask, come by and, and take a look. When we get back open, it will, it will look really different.
That's my plan, when are we planning on opening? I mean, even if we understand, we don't have engineers who want to work, but we still have a museum that's sitting there with lots of stuff to be looked at.
I agree.
I think we need to open up.
Well, that's fine, if we wanna go by the numbers and, and do what we're supposed to do, the mask and all that.
Just put a mask required and, and put a number on the number of people that can put, come in there.
For Greg Jackson.
The number would come from Greg.
Lacy, Lacy, you okay with that?
Um, yeah, I mean, I know we need to open, uh, my issues will be monitoring, actually, actually, um, policing that and making sure that just so many people come in and that they keep their masks on. There's no way really to make people social distance. Because it's one big room and with children especially, you know, you have them running around, they're gonna be touching things and trying to follow the, the rules about cleaning every couple of hours or after every group of visitors. Um, I'm gonna be policing and cleaning most, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time. So that's, that has been the issues, you know. Um, I'm gonna be policing and cleaning most, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time. So that's, that has been the issues, you know, so far. Or those have been some of the issues so far. It's just basically one big room, you know, but I know we have a museum sitting there and we need to open it. It's just trying to figure out how to safely open it.
Have you got?
Even though we had to put stanchions, you know, keep people from where the two can't get close enough to touch everything and do like some other museums to open them, even if the train's not running, that, like I said, there's still a whole lot of stuff to be seen.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no way, there's no room around the thing to put, uh, like a rope or something, you know, around it because you start blocking fire exits. But, you know, we can open it. Um, what I had put in the report to y'all earlier was to open it on a limited basis and see how it goes. Uh, try to, you know, really monitor the number. Probably, um, you know, if we have school groups that want to come in and there's twenty-five kids, I don't, I don't know what, what do we do about that?
Ten, ten, ten at a time.
Okay. Uh, yeah.
I think.
You know, you're limited hour basis, just like the grant.
Do what now?
Limited hour basis. You want a limited hour basis like the grant has done, you know, just.
Yeah.
And you have, you know, reserve to come in, you know, plan ahead time. They can't just come walking in with a big group.
Yeah. Lisa, I, I suggest that you give with Dominique. In between the two of y'all, I feel very confident y'all can come up with something on a limited basis that would serve, serve purpose.
Okay. Will do.
Okay. Okay, anything else of Lisa? Buster?
Uh, y'all have my report. Unless you have any other questions, I just have a couple of things for executive session.
Uh, Buster, I want to mention, um, Pearl, Aloe, Church and Christmas, I've had so many calls of, there's a constant shooting area all the night or every night right in that area. And I'm hoping that, uh, I don't know if we need, uh, uh, more police is, uh, to help, uh, manage that area because it's getting, it's really getting real, real bad in that area now. It's Pearl, Aloe Church and Christmas, almost every night or every other night, somebody shooting up in the air, they're shooting at each other. So we really need some help in that area over there.
I will take care of that personally myself, Mr. Campbell.
See, that's one of the things I think all of us have a concern about. I, I want to say that, you know, that's south end of Cleveland and east Cleveland is really out of control. And when I say that, I don't say it lightly. It's, it's really out of control and we gonna have to do something to establish, uh, protocol.
If we could get somebody, just one person, to give us some information as to where that's coming from, then we will take care of it. I got a call from one of the Aldermen that gave a specific address. We went to look at that address and the person that called them didn't, didn't give them a correct address. So, uh, we have an area though that we're been, we've been looking at and we put some cars in that area and unless I'm mistaken, we haven't had, uh, a couple, but a couple of calls, but it wasn't for gunshots in that area. Uh, we're trying to do what we can. If I could just get one person to help us out, so we can make an example out of somebody. Uh, when these people come out, they shoot, they don't stick around, they leave. And by the time the officers get there, they're gone. And they're not gonna shoot in the presence of an officer. So we're gonna have to go in that area to try to find them. So we need some community involvement to help us with this.
Let me, one last question and I'm gonna turn it over to someone else. Uh, I know we get your report, but I would like to see, I think I made mention of this before. Uh, the drug cases and things of that nature that we have. Uh, let's go in the court and things of that nature.
I can send you, uh, a copy of our arrest reports each month. I'd be glad to include that with my report. And that way you can see who's being arrested and what they're being arrested for.
Well, I just need to know the number cases. I want to get it specific.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm, I can provide that if that's what you would want.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Other question? Okay, Greg?
Uh, we've been pretty busy at the, uh, fire station over there. I know you're seeing a lot of progress going on over there. Um, we're probably gonna be in there probably late October, early November is what it looks like. Very excited about that. Uh, got fire prevention coming up. It's gonna look a little different this year. I've already been to the library and been filmed there for story hour. Uh, trying to start with the kids the best I can. Um, again, I told the mayor yesterday, um, if y'all do happen to see that video, I'm not a good actor, so, um, just bear with me. I'm doing the best I can with what we're allowed to do with education. Um, got a surprise visit from the rating bureau. We, uh, were supposed to get them in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, they came this morning. So I spent all day with, uh, Richard Palmer from the rating bureau and, uh, he is, uh, it looks very, very good for us. Again, um, they complimented the involvement with the city, with the, uh, support that we get from the board and the Aldermen. Also a lot of compliments on, uh, being able to provide the fire department with volunteers. Uh, so kudos goes out to the, um, business owners and, um, everyone. He was very complimentary of the system that we have in place and, uh, of course, it's been here a long time. Uh, and other than that, uh, I'll make sure this week that I'll go by and help Ms. Lisa at the train museum and measure her service area to, uh, try to help her the best we can to, um, I know she's concerned about being as safe as possible and making sure that she's, uh, providing what she can for the community as well, and we'll try to assist her the best we can. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Lisa, back to you too. And I'm, uh, we don't want to put you at risk. Don't, don't think I'm saying that, but I'm just saying we, if we limit it to ten people, you know, that that's all we'll let in is ten people. And if we're at this time, we're not having classrooms of adults yet. Or if we're gonna do it, they'll have to bring them in, in smaller groups or, you know. I'm just saying we look and see what, what. I'm not saying, I know the answer, quite honestly.
Okay. I think Lisa and Dominique, that's two good heads going together figuring it out. I feel confident in what they'll come up with.
Yeah, I'm not pushing in. I'm just willing to help any way I can to, to, yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement as well. Very good.
I don't think she's hearing us.
Okay, Jamie?
I heard you. I heard, I heard it all.
Okay.
Jamie?
Hi, um, I do have the updated report. Um, it ended up being eighty-three intakes for the month, fifty-five dogs, twenty-eight cats. It was a heavy county month. It was sixty-one point four percent of our intakes were county, uh, thirty-one point three percent were city, and that was mainly dogs. Uh, we have been looking at the numbers and most of the dogs come from the county and mostly cats come from the city. But, uh, we are seeing an increase in adoptions. I think people are getting a little more comfortable with, uh, you know, getting out and about and scheduling appointments. So we have seen an increase in adoptions and a lot more interest. So we're, that's, that's all I have from my report.
Okay. Speaking of comfortable, I guess we'll go to Keith.
All right. Um, my report is, uh, in pretty good detail. I only have two things I want to mention. Number one, if you look in the water section, uh, you will see a drastic reduction in our unaccounted for water, which means that also indicates we should see a drastic increase in revenue because that's what unaccounted for is. That's the water that you're losing. You're not getting paid for. And this new water system we're getting is, it's incredible. And, uh, my hat's off to Dominique because she, she's taken the ball and ran with it on this thing. She's taking the lead and we are, we are ahead of time with this thing because of her. We have, we've already been schooled. The meter readers have been trained. They're making dry runs each week, terrible runs and reading them. And the data we're getting back is, is really good. The leak detection on this program is fantastic. We will be able to go to each customer that's got a leak and advise them, hey, you got a leak. And, uh, I think all of it is gonna be a huge benefit to this city and the contractor is doing a great job. He's, he's actually, I think he's running ahead of schedule. I mean, he's done put twenty-five hundred meters in the ground and we got them functional and we're reading them. So, um, it's a huge plus and I think this city should be proud of the fact that, that we're getting where we're going with it. And that, that's all I've got. Thank y'all.
Uh, thank you, Keith. Questions of Keith?
Yes, uh, right on the corner of Christmas and Wade Grove, there's a continual water leak either coming from that store or coming, uh, it's on city property. It had been leaking quite a, quite a while. So I wish that, uh, you know, we could, uh, get that corrected because, uh, the water had ran from Christmas Street all the way down to Church Street. Now it's just a stream of water that continue leak all the time.
I'll look at it first thing in the morning, Ted.
Thank you. Ray Bell?
Uh, good evening. Uh, y'all have my report, but, uh, a little brief update about the Earth Day. It was, uh, very, very good turnout. We had about a hundred and fifty cars to come to Public Works and on our dropout points, we had probably about three times a minute, uh, drop off what we normally have at those dropout points. And we're working on trying to get ready for next year. I had some information that I sent to you, Mayor, and, uh, to Ms. Dominique, and I was gonna give it to you all in the morning because we're gonna have to be on fast track in order to get ready, to try to be ready for the grant, which is gonna have to close. The first grant approval will be in October, the first. So we're gonna have to be a little rush, rush, try to put this together. If we're gonna try to do it with the county, we need to make that decision in the next couple of weeks so we can get everything put in place. And I'll talk with you about that in the morning.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, questions of Ray Bell?
Mayor, can I, can I bag up just one minute for Buster if he's still with us?
Uh, Buster, you still around?
Yes, I'm here.
Buster, I, I just wanted to tell you on Thursday, uh, six o'clock, uh, at Amzamore Park, they're, they're gonna request your assistance and some of the officers if you can. Um, they're gonna have a prayer vision out there for the students that's going, you know, returning back to school and some of the parents.
I will be glad to send some, but, uh, as you know, I just sent that text message. We're gonna have a, another protest march that's scheduled for that evening at six o'clock. So I'm gonna have to divert a lot of my resources in that area. I don't even know exactly where it's gonna be, uh, taking place at. We just know that it's supposed to be taking place.
Well, you know, that will not, there's more, you know. Yeah, we won't need but one.
Okay. Leah?
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Uh, always I've got a few things for you, uh, but I'll, I'll try to be quick about it. Uh, first off is a, a, uh, pay request number two for Roy Collins, and that's for the storm damage, um, repairs.
Y'all can do them all together.
We can all do them all at once if you want to go through all of them.
And then, uh, I also have, um, two invoices from, uh, Barge on the, um, the ramp expansion and then another two from Barge on the, uh, airfield prehab.
Why do, why do we have a, yes, sixteen and a pay request nineteen? Where are seventeen and eighteen?
Uh, what, what happened is, uh, back in the spring, Barge, they were working from home and pretty much, um, uh, the invoice for May didn't get sent out. And, you know, I got to talking with them and, uh, they, they just sent it to me this past month. So that's the reason we've, uh, we've already paid, um, um, the invoice in between.
Got you. Okay.
Okay. Did you get all of them, including Clint?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Robert made a motion, Paul second, all in favor, say aye.
Uh.
Okay. Other questions of Clint? Okay, we'll go to Jason.
How are y'all this evening?
Good.
Um, outside of my report, the only thing I really want to discuss tonight, uh, is the possibility of putting a frisbee, a disc golf course, uh, in the open area out at the bike trail, uh, downtown. Um, I've had assistant come to me. He brought in all the details. The project cost would be somewhere around ten thousand dollars. And he is going to get that, actually try to get donations for the whole project. Um, so really the only thing the city would be out is just a little maintenance cost, which we're already cutting grass. I think Ray Bell is cutting grass in that area. Maybe we need around the poles, around the baskets that we would put out there.
Exactly where is it, Jason?
Well, it's an eighteen hole, uh, course. So it would start pretty much as soon as you come on the walking trails in the grass area. Uh, it would start and it would, it would go all throughout the whole walking area over in the bike area. I mean, it's, uh, I do have.
I just worry about, there, there are a number of people that walk on that walking trail on a daily basis. So they gonna have to be dodging frisbees?
Well, from what I've learned, there are people that play frisbee golf almost every day out at Bear Pean and a lot of the holes all around the walking trails out there. Uh, they don't throw the frisbees whenever people are walking out there. They're pretty courteous with, so I don't think that'll be a problem. Uh, so, yeah, it's, uh, it is around the walking trail, but. I'm sorry? I couldn't hear you.
Paul, you're, you're cutting out, Paul.
Oh, yeah. Uh, we're going from C P House South. That's where it's going.
It, yes, the bike trail, actually.
Yes, the bike trail. It was part of the bike trail. I do have.
I thought that too at first.
Never mind.
It's wide open spaces there.
Okay.
I do have photos that I could drop off, uh, to Dominique and she making sense to you guys?
I think that would be good.
Uh, it kind of lays out the whole golf course, uh, where everything is. Uh, like I said, it's pretty spread out. I mean, most of them are, uh, you would have like a tee box, which is like a concrete slab of, like, uh, maybe a, I guess a three by four concrete slab. There's a sign there saying this is the hole, and then there would be a basket a few hundred yards down there. And you would throw the frisbee at the basket and then there'd be another one. So it's pretty spread out. Um, but I, I will drop off the layout of the course with Dominique, uh, so she can give it to you guys.
Yeah, so that's not, that's not including turntable down there.
It does. It goes, it goes around turntable, correct? Like I said, it pretty much covers, uh, the whole, I guess, open area around the bike trail.
Jason, I think if we could have a, a copy of the layout, it would make this a lot easier to make this.
Yeah, everybody'd feel a little more comfortable seeing maybe.
Okay. And what I got from this person too is he does travel and he plays in frisbee golf tournaments. Uh, from my understanding, that's actually a pretty big crowd. And in order to host one of these, most time you have to have two courses. So right now we have one at Bear Pean. If we get a second course here, we may can try to start having some tournaments here and bring people in from around the area. And the one he went to was in Little Rock. So, I mean, they travel a good distance playing at these. So.
Jackson, I've got a question. I got a, a text right before our meeting. The Neighborhood Watch Group on College Street there asked, what is the status of the gate?
It's, uh, like I said, we have the gate out there and we're just waiting, uh, on the company to come drill the holes and set it. Um, I know they got a little bit behind. You know, it's the same company that's doing the poles, uh, out at Amzamore. So, uh.
So it'll be shortly, the gate on the back?
I'm hoping so. I mean, I, I'm calling him every day. Uh, so.
That's all you can do.
Yeah, it's one of those things. We're just waiting on them. We have everything out there for it to be set up. Uh, so we're just waiting on them right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Danny, you got a question?
I do. Uh, Jason, have you met with the advisory board, uh, this month? Did y'all meet?
We had, we set up a meeting, uh, this past month. Uh, not a lot of attendance there, so we're gonna try to set up another one here the next week or so, probably after the drafts, uh, because we're having baseball and softball drafts this week. So we're probably trying to set one up, uh, for September, starting next week.
Just keep us posted too and those representatives that we appointed that from wars that's not attended, Jason.
I will. We just started back having them, uh, this past month, but I am keeping attendance on that and what you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. How's the lighting situation coming along?
I'm sorry?
How's the lighting situation coming along for those parks over there?
Well, uh, one of the projects got approved in budget, so, uh, coming up, I guess in October, we can go ahead and start with that and putting lights in these parks and lighting up playgrounds.
Okay.
You guys will just need to approve that once more at the October meeting, Jason.
Yes, yes. I've got quotes, I've got two quotes on that as well.
And one last thing, please get with John Cox on that USTA, uh, possibility for some additional money for lighting on a tennis courts?
I did, I actually, I didn't get with John, but I did get with the guy from Mississippi Tennis Association, uh, and reached out to him, trying to get in touch with the person from, uh, USTA as well. So I, I do need to copy John on that because he helped me out real big last time.
If you need any help, give me a call too, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Dominique?
Yes, so the first thing is we need to approve the twenty twenty Avalon tax levy resolution.
Gary made the motion, Robert second, all in favor, say aye.
All right, so we gotta talk about, uh, the water department. Um, so we have not disconnected. Um, so we have not disconnected anybody since February. And we do have some people, we have about a little less than a hundred that essentially haven't paid since February. So we sent them a letter and by certified mail, some of these folks unfortunately are, um, typically on the disconnect list every month anyway. Um, so we did send them a letter via certified mail. Some of those, a lot of those little cards have come back. So we know people have gotten them. Um, we've had a few people, probably less than fifteen or so people out of that seventy-eight have set up payment plans. So I just want to make sure you guys are good with us continuing to cut off in this, in September. So September twenty-first would essentially be our first disconnection, unless you guys had other thoughts.
Are the meters working correctly in these areas?
As far as we know, yes, sir. When you say working correctly, the new meters, the old meters?
Well, my whole point is do, do we have a new meter there that we know that the bill they're getting is an accurate bill?
The meter itself, for the most part, we have not had an issue with. The brass itself, that's, you know, the dial that's moving. So as far as we know, that meters, that that water, if water is flushing through that meter, then as long as it's read properly, then it should be accurate. Yes, sir.
Okay. So basically what you said was that these people are typically the people that are on the cutoff list all the time anyway.
Right.
I think we got to get back on schedule.
Can I make one comment, Mayor?
Sure.
If, if, if they come in, you had fifteen come in and sign an agreement and they're paying and they're good to go.
That's right.
Right.
Oh, this, this may provoke the rest of those individuals to say, I want to sign an agreement and start paying and getting back on track. Is that a fair statement, Madam Clerk?
So we were take, we were going to take a hard line, at least in thinking about it, that since we've sent you that letter, when we cut off the twenty-first, everything's going to be due back at that time.
Okay.
Essentially, we're giving you the grace now to set up a payment plan. And then if you wait until the day you're cut off, essentially either we're going to make you pay the full balance or at least fifty percent.
That's fair enough.
And then be. Fifty percent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then what we're doing too is part of this payment plan, if you miss a payment in the payment plan, all bets are off and you have to pay the balance of the bill due.
That's good.
We've had that happen already once. So.
Old demand if no demand.
Do we need a motion on that?
I don't know what, hmm, maybe so, because I think you.
It's just a procedural thing.
Okay.
Right, that's true.
But can I, are, are you through?
Yes, sir.
I need to ask a question and I missed this when we were talking about the budget. I, I was looking at the budget earlier this afternoon. Did we get to put the money in there to, uh, do the, um, uh, city portion to make the Baxter Waterwell Project work?
Yes.
What fund is that in? I couldn't find it.
It's in public. Well, it should be in the, um, the new fund. No, it's in economic development and revolving that hundred thousand there.
Okay. I didn't see it. That's the reason I was asking the question. So I just, you know, I don't expect you to do anything now, but we just might need to check it tomorrow.
And then we also sent a letter to the county about, you know, coming up with a hundred thousand too, but, um, but I thought we put it in there. I'll double check and let you guys know.
I di, I didn't see it. I just wanted to break, call it to your attention.
Sure.
Heather? You hear us? Heather?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, first thing tonight, I have the approval for employee action request. Unless you have any item that you want to move to executive.
I have a question, Heather. On those, on those transfers that we had, were those jobs posted at all?
No, they were not posted, um, due to that we've had to move someone in that position. The only person that was available to move into that position that met the requirements was Billy Trotter. Uh, so we can get back on track there at community development.
Well, are you normally required to, to post on every job opening?
Policy says you will, but this is within the department, Heather. I don't know the answer to that.
No, and we don't have it in our policy that we're required within the department.
I thought our policy was that any opens and I don't have a problem with Billy Trotter. I just want to make sure that if he's the only person obvious, but we should have posted, I think.
Um, we can remove this recommendation and we can post it if you'd like. But.
I think Maurice is just trying to be consistent.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but the other side of the coin, well, the other side of the coin, what Heather's saying is that apparently he was the only person qualified to move in that position.
Correct.
Yeah, but we still can do it at the same time. We just posted and, you know, just.
I agree. I, I'm not going to argue about that point. Just go on and post it. He's, he's still going to be the same person.
Right.
Right.
Okay. So what we looking for most?
Suggestion, would you post it and modify your appointment to be an interim appointment and then you make it a final appointment?
Right. Right.
I agree. I, I make a motion. We approve it based on Danny's recommendation.
Okay. Gary, Danny, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. What else, Heather?
Okay. Heather, I'm sorry, Heather. Go ahead. You, you were going to make recommendation for some more employees.
No, sir.
I think the question is, do we do it on an open session or executive session? In that, Heather, what you?
I, I didn't.
For the suspensions?
Well, I mean, we can't, I, I don't want to go into, uh, names or anything like that, but can we approve the recommendations in open session? Is that what everybody wants to do or do we want to discuss it in executive? I mean, is that where you are?
If you would like for something to be moved into executive, uh, we can. It's no problem.
Let's just do that so we can move on.
Okay. All right. Uh, Robert?
Mayor, I think I've covered everything.
I believe you have too.
Thank you, Mayor, for your hard work during this pandemic. Thank you and everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Maurice?
Do we have a hiring policy for approval?
Uh, we have the progressive disciplinary policy for approval. I actually uploaded it last month for you guys to review. Uh, we did make one adjustment Ted, as you're aware of, but tonight I'm asking for it to be approved.
Okay, we could, we can act on that. We still.
The adjustment, uh, ladies and gentlemen, the adjustment was to reflect the authority consistent with state law. The mayor and board in a meeting would be the ones to approve suspending someone without pay or terminating. And that was the change that was made in there.
I have one question there, Danny. From the time, is that person, uh, what happened from the time that they are suspended until the board meets? Are they with pay or without pay?
Uh, you're with, you're with pay until somebody, until the board says you're without pay because the board is the only entity with authority to do that.
I make a motion. We approve the pause.
Second.
Maurice, Danny, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Maurice?
Uh, did we get anything back from the county about the, uh, animal shelter?
Yes. Uh, I think what thirty-eight thou?
Can we talk about that in executive session?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay.
That's all. No, I don't have anything else.
Okay, uh, Gary?
Uh, only thing I'm gonna say, I got one call. There's a lot of garbage on the street today.
I thought we put it out yesterday, did we, Dominique? We're running today behind, but yeah, between land and garbage, I think that's my life now.
Uh, well, I, I understand, but I'm just telling you that, that's the only thing I'm here to come.
Okay. I, I just wish I'd have heard it one. Okay. Kirk?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, Governor?
Not public, Billy.
Okay. Uh, and I don't have anything either. Kirk, if you'll get us any.
I'm considering executive session, I believe, for personnel, some litigation, uh, intra-governmental issues. I guess.
You guys made the motion. Gary's second, all in favor, say aye.
I move we in an executive session for the same reason.
Kurt made the motion.
Second.
Gary's second, all in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.